We can go. So the first order of business is to appoint someone to sit. Diane, why don't you sit for Mike? I'm guessing he's probably the least likely to pop up quickly.
I will do that.
Okay. And we have, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes. Those July 20th. I have four or five comments. Does anybody else want to go first?
No, thank you.
I noticed one thing, but you probably, line 53, I think it's Curaleaf, not Carolif.
Yes, right. That's one.
I figured you probably caught that one, though.
We did catch that one. 65. There's just a word in there that says, "The income from the Hartford has been replacing by the property." And I think it is means has been replaced by his property, just a word change. Line 72. Greenberg agreed to, he would be willing to write up his views, I think is what was meant there. That sentence doesn't quite make sense. Line 73. I said that the regulations are only allowing multifamily residential, which I think is important in the context here. Then 76. Greenberg stated, "They have the capability to gain population." What I think he meant is Simsbury has the capability to gain population. Line 81. Mr. Gray inquired if there's an opportunity. Not his, these are just little typos. 89. I asked about the new urbanist model. The new urbanist is a, needs the new in there. And 101. It says, "Discussion considered how to best address amending the regulations to reflect recent court decisions." Is what it really should say. And that's all I have. Have you got anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to amend them as modified?
I'll make that motion and with those changes that we adopt, the minutes as they were submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it passes four to nothing unanimously. Okay, next order of business is, we have a public hearing. Laura? Mike?
Yes.
Could you send Ann Erickson the Zoom link?
I will do that right now.
Okay. Message from the headquarters. Here. Okay. We have a public hearing and since our chief man of public hearings is not here, I'll read it. Application 2007 of Richard Correa, applicant Chris Mill Partners LLC, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 1 of zoning regulations to allow recreation uses for the premises located at 100 Chris Mill Road, Those are references to our new, our current regs, right? Mike?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, make sure. Okay. Mr. Correa, I saw you somewhere.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
In the dark.
I'm in the dark. We're driving, so you can hear me. Can you hear me, David?
I can hear you.
Okay. The, we were in front of the commission a couple of months ago for the dance studio to go into One Mill Pond. And after that, after that meeting, we found that the cost to put her in there would have been prohibitive for her to continue on, you know, to go into that particular building. And we have plenty of room at 100 Chris Mill and figured that we could do this a lot easier with her dance floors and spacing and especially with this COVID environment. Give her more space for the same dollars that she would have had at One Mill Pond. So it's a trip to court and, you know, the story was she was at Simsmore Square for many years and then that building burnt down. She ended up moving to the North Village of Simsbury, to the self-storage facility where they told her they were not going to renew her lease because they were expanding their business. And we want to keep her in Simsbury. She came to, came to us and we took her everywhere to try to find her a deal that would work for her economically and, and something that would keep her in Simsbury. One Mill Pond became cost-prohibited. And, you know, talking with Mike Livin and, you know, other town staff, we felt that moving her up to 100 Chris Mill made a lot of sense. And that's why we're here before you tonight.
Okay. Is there, do we have any comments from the commission questions? Ann, good evening. You're now seated.
Good evening. Sorry about that. I lost, totally lost the link and I couldn't find it. I apologize.
You had a secret way to find it.
Yes, I do. It's the back door.
Right, my back door.
Your back door.
Thanks. Anyway, welcome.
Thanks. Thank you.
You just began the public hearing as you tuned in. Commissioners have questions? I think Rich is available to answer them.
Just to, could I get, I get, just ask for a little more clarification. I didn't have time today to dig out my records of the meetings in May and June, but this, this, the placement of this tenant at Mill Pond was approved by the commission, is my recollection correct? Okay.
Correct.
And your intention now is not to go forward with that. Your intention is simply to have her placed over at 100 Chris Mill, assuming support for that tonight. Okay, I got it.
That's correct.
So I have a question. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, no.
Is she taking less space in the new location?
Probably about the same amount of space. It's just about $50,000 to $60,000 less expensive.
That's significant.
Get it right now, because I'm on a call.
So my only question is, I guess I'm not really familiar. Where is 100 Chris Mill in relation to one Gris, whatever the previous approved? Like, what are they, relation to one another?
It's, it's an abutting property.
Okay. Okay.
It was an office building, right?
Correct. Used to be the former EB, EB headquarters.
It was kind of in the back there?
Yes.
So they're moving in, actually, the previous tenant was Carolif. That was Carolif's original location. But since they've moved out, it's been vacant now for the better portion, what is it, about a year and a half? Has it been that long?
About that, yes. Yeah, about that.
Is all the earth still there in the building? Are they, they cleaned it out? I don't know.
The, she's going to an area that was, you know, the furthest point to the, to the east in the building, the office area that some of the corporate, you know, like Mike Long used to be in that area. That's the area of the building she's going into. That was basically untouched.
Okay, I know where that is, actually. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Just to, a point for the record, there's no changes to the exterior of the building? Nothing outside?
None whatsoever.
Enter.
Nothing. Yes.
And so there's adequate, I'm going to assume, well, let me ask you this. Adequate parking? As that wasn't a concern?
Yes.
The other location? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's more than 150 spaces up there.
Okay, any more questions from commission? Mike, do we receive any public comments?
No, we did not regarding this application.
Okay. Then I guess I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Donna? Was that you?
I'm sorry, my camera's not working.
Your camera's working. Your lips weren't moving.
Oh, interesting. The camera is working. Good to know. Yeah, that was me.
I wasn't watching. Anyway, okay, thank you for making your motion. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ann, you're on mute. Ann?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there we go. All right. Bruce, seconded it. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? None? Okay, it passes five to nothing. The public hearing is closed. Next order of business. I guess we could take up that application, could we not? Mike?
Yes, you may.
But we, I suppose we have to make a motion to add it to the agenda under new business?
Is it under old business? Should have been under old business.
Okay.
Hold on, let me make sure.
What application is it?
It's a new application.
It's, it's actually an old application. You received it. Remember, we continued the public hearing after we received it. Because Rich was waiting to see what was going on. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's an error. It should have been under old business. I should have caught that.
Okay, well, we can make a motion to add it to the agenda. Someone please do that.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda.
To add what?
To add consideration of application 2007. The one we just moved.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I'm in the affirmative on that motion.
Any, any more comments on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? None? Carrie's five, nothing, so we can add it to the agenda. Mike, do you have any comments from the staff? Is there a staff report or?
So, I mean, this is substantially the same application you saw at 105 Mill Pond. The commission reviewed this for that application. There's sufficient parking, as you heard, 150 spaces. All the improvements are interior to the building. Staff has no comments on this. They support granting the special exception.
Okay, is there, can we go through the list of special exception considerations that we are advised to consider in passing a special exception? There's a need.
Yep.
And obviously, they need to rent it and she needs space. What's the second?
Oh, I'm just pulling up my regs right now.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm just getting to the page. So, one is orderly development. The location type, character, size of the use is in harm with, with the orderly development of the neighborhood and will not hinder, discourage appropriate development of adjacent use of properties. Next, property values will not depreciate. The size, height in all proposed buildings, extent to proposed site improvements shall be such to harmonize the existing character of the neighborhood in which the use is established. Next is public safety. The nature, location of proposed use and any buildings of other structures in connection there within shall such to be adequate access for purpose of fire protection, police protection, and other emergency equipment. Traffic considerations. Street serving proposed use adjacent to carry all prospective traffic and adequate provision made for entering, leaving the site. Subject manner, undue hazard to traffic or undue traffic congestion shall be created. Adequate off-street parking, loading facilities as provided. The site provides for the continuation of appropriate improvements as street terminating or proposed to be constructed through a lot of which the proposed use is located. Next is landscape buffers at the site on which the proposed use is be located and situated landscape to protect the neighborhood and adjacent properties. Following, following that as relation to utility systems, sewer, drainage, et cetera, that they don't have a negative impact. You have adequate water, sewer, and appropriate utilities on site. So the, this, this application, because I mean, it's really, it's an interior fit-out, that's a rear lot that's served by a public road, that is served by water and sewer. There really is no negative impact to the surrounding area. All these standards are met.
Thank you. We all, we all understand and agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve application 20-07? Are there any contingencies we should add to it, Mike?
No, I mean, this is, this is very straightforward. And it's, and it's, and it's, the scale of their development is really limited.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Don't we just split out?
You could just make a motion to approve.
Lead it off the agenda.
I make a motion to approve. Application 2007. Pardon me?
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, nothing. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Bye, Rich.
Safe travels.
Night.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. The next order of business is a new application, 20-09 of Mark and Eke Scully, Selectran LLC, for a site plan approval to install carports at the property located, approved solar carports at the property located at 690 Hot Meadow Street.
So this, this application was discussed earlier this evening by the design review board and they actually, they've requested additional information of the applicant. So they're, they'll be bringing more information to the boards for their next meeting on October 5th. So there's no action requested of the commission for this tonight.
Okay. In looking at the drawing, I wondered about, is there a setback? Issues between EB and this property?
They actually applied for a variance of the zoning board of appeals and secured that to put the carport, the rear panels within the required setback between EB and the 690 Hot Meadow Street.
Okay. And this looks like something that isn't visible from the street, right?
It will be somewhat visible. That was part of the issue, that the, the design review board, based on the information provided, struggled to see what, what will this actually look like from the road? They asked for just specifics to the columns, how they'll be painted, and how it will present from Drake Hill. So they're going to be presenting that information to the design review board at the October 5th meeting. They had, they had some prints that were of a different design. That was part of the issue. They had ones that looked very industrial in nature.
Those were the ones that were in our.
That's in, yeah, that's in that letter. It's actually, it's not the units they plan on installing. They actually have a more palatable design, but they needed to revise the, the supporting documentation. So that will be on your agenda in two weeks.
We recommend we table this.
Yes.
The material they submitted said very plainly that it's not visible at all from Hot Meadow Street. The only visibility from a road is from a narrow view when you're traveling Drake Hill. And I'm, well, I guess we can wait and see what they come back with, but I wouldn't expect from what you said that anything's going to change in that regard. They didn't say that, oh, by the way, you can see it from Hot Meadow Street. The writing they submitted says you can't see it from Hot Meadow Street. So either you can or you can't.
You could see it from Drake Hill.
Okay.
That's why.
So that hasn't changed?
That, that will not change. You will see portions of this from Drake Hill, not the, not the entire carport. That's why design review said, because obviously it's a corner lot. They wanted to see, you know, more information on the materials, because you will see it if you're driving west on Drake Hill towards Hot Meadow Street.
Okay, and the applicant has no timing problems or anything?
No, no, they, they will have, they have sufficient time to provide that added detail at the next meeting. They were, they were in support of design review's request.
Okay, can we have a motion to table application, consideration of application 20-09?
To the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes five to nothing. That's tabled. Okay, now we're at regulations update workshop. We are in consideration of signed regulations and trying to get them both in conformance with recent court decisions and also to consider what ought to be changed in today's environment. I think it would be good to have Mike go through his memo that he sent us detailing what was, needed to be changed in their current regs. I know that people asked for that last time and he did it. But it might help us get in sync with what's going on, to have him review that. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
So I'll start off with the memo. I actually, let me make sure I opened the wrong document. I have the, a sample regulation too that was uploaded. It should be in your, in the packet too, but I'll, oh, it's loaded twice. So what I went, on my, my memo to the commission, I went through, there's two, there's two court cases that are driving the boat on signs. One is the US Supreme Court case, it's Reed versus Gilbert, that basically says your regulations can't create classes by the user, meaning you can't say a gas station has one standards and church gets another. And a third one is a business. Everyone's got to be the same uniform in the approach. The other is a Connecticut court case that basically says, it's Artesian versus the city of Milford, that signed regulations in Connecticut can only regulate signs that are advertising. That was a case where there was a homeowner, they were angry with their contractor and they put up a big sign, "Don't hire XYZ contractor." The zoning officer in, in, in Milford cited the, the couple and basically said, "That sign exceeds what's allowed in our regs for residential zoning district." The Connecticut Supreme Court said, "The statute says advertising. That sign does not, does not qualify as advertising. It's a freedom of speech sign, so therefore it's exempt from local sign regulations." So that's what's, that's, those are the two court cases that are driving the boat. So what I did in my memo was, I kind of went through, highlighted areas that via, that are in violation of the US Supreme Court case in red, and areas that are, violate the Connecticut Supreme Court case in green. Like I said earlier, the example being on the, on my, in the first page of the residential zoning zones, it shows, it shows a real estate sign, a section that says, "Real estate sign not to exceed six square feet." We can't unfortunately carve out the real estate signs. It's got to be based on the zoning district the sign's located in. And, you know, same thing, bulletin boards, farms, that all kind of carving it out in different little sections based on users is considered a violation of the, of this, of the federal court case. And that kind of goes through, all through the non-residential zones, residential zones. There was a few sections, and let me get into, the temporary signs. Temporary signs that for temporary outdoor charitable civic nonprofit, technically, under the, the Connecticut Supreme Court case, that would violate that decision. So what I did was, you had that memo that kind of goes, that's through your existing regulations. There's, it's a eight-page memo. And like I said, red, red's going to be federal, green is going to be state. What I did was, also that's in your packet, is the IMLA model sign code. And that was from Bob DiCrescenzo. So that was a setup where it was a sign code developed by the International Land Use Attorneys Group and, or, I'm sorry, the, I'm going to say the wrong group, but anyways, it was developed by a group of attorneys. And how do you, how do you create Reed versus Gilbert regulations? Like I said, Reed versus Gilbert regulations, you can't regulate by the content or the user of the sign. You have to regulate where the sign's going. So what I did was, in your, in your packet, there is a, there is a, a draft kind of structure of a, of a regulation. It's only three pages versus our existing six of what signed regulations would look like to conform to these court, two court cases. And I'll go in and share, screen share right now, if the commission's okay, and kind of walk you through what the, what these regulations would look like. These are just, these are just the townwide regulations. I did not touch the center zone yet, because I wanted to make sure that the commission was understood, you know, kind of what, what's going to, what's the result of, what, what these court cases are, you know, how, how we have to meet the standards of that. So the purpose, the purpose section of the regs, that's coming from your existing regs. I did not change anything in there. The one thing I kind of added was a preamble saying, "Permanent temporary signs must conform to design standards." So first thing I did was, got into the residential zones. So in the residential zone, zone districts and your existing signed regulations, there's all kinds of different classes. What I did was, rather than calling out all these different classes, I looked at the users and tried to figure, okay, so what are the users that are using up to six square feet? And what's the nature of their signs? For permanent signs first. So up to six square feet, it may be identification purposes of a, of a, of a home. It could be a sign that is, that is there for real estate purposes. But I'll get into this more temporary. Or freedom of speech signs. That I put in as, as, and this is kind of what the structure would go to. Don't, this is not the final version. Obviously, the commission could, will dictate how this will be set up, but I just wanted, these are just placeholders. The, I said for that case, a sign that does not exceed six square feet was okay as of right in a zone, in any zoning, in the residential zoning district, and did not require a permit. A sign that was greater, greater than seven square feet, did not exceed 12 square feet inside, would require a zoning permit. A sign that is greater than 13 square feet, but did not exceed 32 square feet, would be subject to a special exception. So in the case of the residential zoning district, one of the signs that are going up to 32 square feet, usually those are either contractor signs associated with a development or it is a sign that's allowed by a specially permitted use in a residential zoning district. So.
Wait a minute. Do contractor signs not tend to, well, this is a section related to permanent. Are contractor? Are contractor signs permanent?
Uh, no, no, I'm just, I'm just coming up with it, what in your existing regulations, what your uses are. I'm sorry, you're right, Bruce, that will fall more under, more under temporary signs, which I carved out that, I'll show that in a little bit. I'm sorry, sorry for the confusion.
Mike, looking at Highcroft Sign, where does that fall?
So that would be a special exception based on the size.
Okay.
Now, and like I said, the, the approval process, we can change this, but this structure, this would meet Reed versus Gilbert.
Okay.
And let me get into now the non-residential signs. So this is obviously all our business zones and industrial zoning districts. One is, you know, I kept, I kept the ratios the same. So we get one square feet of signage for every one foot of building frontage along the public right of way. That's, that's in your existing regs, we're not changing that. Free standing signs, one per property, the total area cannot exceed 32 square feet, 10 feet in height, 12 feet in length, and must have around the base four feet of landscaping. And site plan approval for that. Wall mounted, the total number is not, we don't regulate the total number, what we regulate is the area, and that's two-thirds, it cannot exceed two-thirds of the building's frontage along the public right of way, also site plan approval. So in your current rates, it's, this is not changing. I didn't change these regs at all, I just put it together and kind of consolidated it. And I should just go back to it, sign plans are subject to a, each site is required to develop a sign plan, and I, even though it's redundant, because it's kind of repeats it in the, in the table, I said it's, you know, sign plans are subject to site plan approval by the commission. The next page, sign plan requirements, once again, this is repeat of your existing regulations, just consolidated. The next is a little different. This is the temporary signs. So I broke down the temporary signs as temporary signs that are residential zoning district and temporary signs that are located in a non-residential zoning districts. And like I said earlier, this all can change, and I'm not looking for direction from the commission tonight, maybe you can digest this for our next meeting. One was, this was getting into what I said earlier, how do you handle some of these temporary signs by square footage? Let's do it by size, not by user. So six square feet, political signs, real estate signs, freedom of speech signs, and then they put something up related to an election matter. Well, I put those as okay, no permit necessary. It's a, once you hit seven square feet to 12, then a zoning permit's required. Then after that, if it's greater than 13, not to exceed 32, a site plan from the commission. And this is just, this is, this, I'm open for guidance or, or direction from the commission on this setup.
Would this, would this say that the top one, a sign not exceeding six square feet? The implication here that there is only one allowed per property, is that what that's saying?
So that's, that's a good question for the commission. Do you want to regulate the number of temporary signs at a property, or you want to have a, someone have the ability to have multiple signs?
Can the signs, can the signs add up to six square feet?
Well, so you could do, yeah, you could say the cumulative total cannot exceed six square feet, or you could just say, you know, you could have, you know, there's not a, there's not a number of, that you're, that you're limited to, however, the total area, I mean, the total size of one sign cannot exceed six square feet. Because I was just thinking, so in a residential zoning district, what are the temporary signs you're going to put up? You're going to put up most likely political signs on election time? Contractors, you may have multiple contractors working at your house. So those were the instances where I'm like, I don't think limiting it to one sign may be appropriate based on the nature of temporary signs at a, at a residence.
Do we define temporary anywhere?
So, so I'm going to, that's the next thing. The, the model code had some language on defining temporary signage, and that was the, the question for the commission is, what do you feel is appropriate for a duration of time for it to be considered temporary? I put 90 days in there for these, for these, but that's just, just, just a talking point at this point. You know, because if you want to think of it at the same time for, let's say your current regulations, in a, a temporary not-for-profit sign is allowed for up to 60 days on your current regulations. Is that, is that kind of the cutoff of what everyone could stomach for a temporary sign in a residential zoning district? We haven't got into the non-residentials.
Yeah. That seems, that would seem to work for most things.
Yeah.
I was, the only thing I would question is, is with contractor, do we, are we concerned? I mean, most jobs 60 days seems reasonable, right? I mean, it's not like people are going to go crazy if it's 62 days, but at least that's a, that's a good baseline.
Well, it depends on what they're doing. If they're building a house, 60 days is really nothing.
Good point.
And what do they need a temporary sign for that period?
Well, so if, if that contractor sign does not exceed 60 square feet, they don't need a permit. So the, maybe a suggestion is that the duration of time for those temporary signs doesn't apply once, until you're getting to the larger signs on the property.
Okay, let's, let's move on, see the rest.
And I apologize, for some reason, I'm missing the non-residential zoning districts. I have a, I did, I put in some regs on that, and for some reason it's not on this version. Because the non, the, the temporary signs in a non-residential zoning district are going to be the, you know, similar to what we're seeing right now, where, so, so an A-frame, for example, about six square feet, do you want to regulate A-frames that go out in front of a business? If so, you know, what's appropriate? So would we say that, you know, six square feet, if you want to use your existing regulations, we allow signs to go out in front of a business four times a year at 14 days a clip, so let's just say 60 days. They can put a sign that doesn't exceed six square feet for 60 days. And that would be okay, or we can require, still require a zoning permit for that. The next thing would be the, the size signs, once we're exceeding six square feet, similar numbers that I'm using right now, seven to 12, so those are banners. Do you want to rate, to regulate the banners that go up at a business? It would, you know, same sort of setup that we're have for the residential zoning districts.
Well, let me just add a thought though, that when you say 90 days, I'm, I'm inferring you're referring to 90 consecutive days, and not like three days a week for the whole year.
Well, that's actually, that's good, that's a good question, Bruce. Yeah, how do you want it?
Two days a week for the whole year. A little up.
Well, it could be, well, no, no, so 90 days per calendar year or 90 consecutive days? That's, that's actually a good question. That's something for the commission to, to decide, because it's really, you know.
What does the model say that they suggested?
You have latitude on that, how you want to define, hold on.
Well, I'm sure it's not easy to find, that thing's 27 pages long.
Yeah.
Our current is seven pages, and your draft is three.
Yep, I was trying to find a happy median, but keeping with the spirit of the, of that model.
Yeah.
And so the other thing too is, so I talked to Bob DiCrescenzo about this, and Bob, should the commission feel comfortable moving towards this direction? Bob wants to take a look at this, the two of us were supposed to get together about, to have a more detailed conversation regarding the new sign regulations and conforming to these two court cases.
Well, what's our alternative? If we say, you know, no, we're not comfortable with this, then we're going to have, give you the left with a code, a code that's not enforceable. What could he say?
Yeah, so you, you got, you got one, you got one, one thing that could, that could happen. One thing that could happen is, yeah, you can, you can get challenged. You have a code that you can get challenged on. Which, you know, that could, that could be problematic.
You're telling us that based on the federal and state law, our position's indefensible? I don't understand how it could be.
Yes.
Challenge would, could turn out in our favor. Maybe Bob DiCrescenzo could give us an opinion on that. How is it conceivable we could get a favorable outcome? But I don't want to detract from your presentation, and I'm getting a good sense.
Like, no, but.
Better than just reading it.
Multiple, multiple signs off-site, like, I'm thinking of signs that indicate where you can park for a concert.
So, so directional signs, that's what they, that's actually, so Reed versus Gilbert, it's an interesting case, that's actually about directional signs, and exactly that, it was a church event. So what I would say is this, is, is if, if the signs, let's say they're in a non, let's say they're residential zoning district first, they're temporary signs, and they don't exceed six square feet, well, they're already as, they're permitted as of right. The, the model regulation has a comment in there that the traffic signs, you could carve those things out, however, it flirts with violating Reed versus Gilbert. So the recommendation in that point was try not to tread down the road where it's an issue. We could, I could, I'll, I can ask that question specific to Bob DiCrescenzo, because like I said, there's commentary in that model, that model sign ordinance, so therefore maybe he, he can shed some light onto what that model ordinance they shared with me and say, how can we, how can we put something in there that, that deals with the temporary directional signs associated with, with events? That doesn't create a undue standard or burden to those event coordinators.
Okay, well, I, you know, I would see that Performing Arts Center, the people would go out, and they put the signs up, after the event's over, they take them in, and we've never had to go to the town and ask for permission, or at least we've never done it, never asked for permission.
And because, you know, Performing Arts Center is a good example, they're a responsible party, I don't want, I don't want to, I don't think we should be developing a regulation that's, that's regulating them in the sense of saying, you know, you need a, you need a sign permit for your directional signs, because the intent is, it's, it's, it's providing direction for public safety purposes. So I'm not, I, I would say that that flies against zoning if we start regulating that. I'll just, I'll ask Bob if there's some sort of carve-out we can provide. So the last section of this proposal is the sign prohibitions. You know, having signs that are movable, portable, attached to a vehicle unless it's integral part of the business, that's in your existing regulations. The whole internally lit portion of your regs, that's still here, unless the commission wants to revisit that issue. Signs that move or rotate, two new sections, this is something that Bob D. asked for to go in your regs. Signs cannot be erected or placed in a public right-of-way, we've had an issue with that recently. And that no sign shall be erected or placed on a, on a public property unless written permission is provided by the town manager or his or her designate. We've had an issue with unpermitted signs popping up on town property. And he would like that to go in your regulations, but we specifically wanted to put that in there to say, you know, for the things or events that occur on town property that we, we allow, we'd like it to continue with written permission. Things that we not aware of, or we don't want on our property for whatever reason, we have a, have a regulation to say no. So that's, that's all I have of this proposal. I don't know, is the, I know, I know it's a lot quick, and you know, it's a little late to upload it, I apologize, but I don't know if the commission has any thoughts so far?
Well, a couple of things. One, where DiCrescenzo wants us to prohibit putting, I mean, in a reg, say you can't put a sign on a public right-of-way, seems to me we don't control that. The people who have the public right-of-way pick up the signs and throw them away. It's okay if we put it in there, but it's really not something we would enforce. They enforce it. The state picks them up and takes them to Avon. So anyway.
Yeah, political signs included.
Including political signs, right? Well, the people, people put them in, you know, in the medians and stuff, and they get picked up, which they should. The other thing is, you know, we have, I looked this morning, between almost 1,500 new voters between 2016 and this month. And that's really what you're seeing in the apartments that are going up and down Hot Meadow Street. So I, I'm thinking that we've got lots of new people who are unfamiliar with the town, and we've got lots of businesses in the town that are absolutely getting hammered with this COVID stuff that, you know, all of the restaurants and, but in particular. Is there some way that we can make it easier for residents to find properties, find restaurants, find ATMs? You know, we, we're making it, we have in the past made it so it was very, very difficult to put a sign up to indicate where something was. Any comments from anybody?
Well, I'm not sure, Dave, what we might do. I mean, I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the businesses that are losing volume and income and all that. I personally don't know enough about signage to offer a lot of support other than to say I'm for it, but, you know, it's, it's not easily, we haven't been there yet, but dialing it back, because one day, while the timeline seems to be in dispute, one day there's going to be medical resolution of this. And, and I don't know how we're going to get back to what the things were that we valued and we gave up in order to try to provide support for businesses, and.
The world has changed too, there are technologies.
I know.
You could have a, you know, an eight-foot by six-foot billboard that's just a video, and a lot of places allow those somehow. I'm, I'm thinking, have you ever driven down, I think it's through Middletown, is it Route 9 that goes down through Middletown?
Yes.
Years ago, I used to drive down there, and there was a restaurant off on the west side kind of, that had a neon sign, I don't remember what it was, but it was a very attractive place, and I always wanted to stop in there because I thought it must be a good restaurant. So shouldn't we be allowing restaurants to do a little, maybe put neon signs out, or do something that's, that's on main thoroughfares?
But you can't just let restaurants do it then?
Well, you let.
And then you have neon signs everywhere. Yeah.
And then it'll be, we spent so much money on these signs, you can't make us take them down. Unwinding, you know, the accommodations or the, you know.
We also have, not in this new proposal, the color issue that we run into so many times.
Right, actually, the color stuff was still in there, right, Mike? I saw the provision about the color of backgrounds and borders.
In here, in this proposed sign?
Yes.
No, not, not in the proposal.
Yeah.
No, no, because, because unfortunately, your regs, courtesy, the other thing too is, these two court cases.
Sorry, Don, I mixed it up with something and another, another piece of information that was part of this.
Yeah, so these, the other thing with these court cases is, we can't regulate based on content. So I think in the center regs, it would pass the straight face test because it's a form-based code. But the townwide regs, that you have that unpermitted, that clause where you have an unpermitted sign, but the zoning officer can sign off on it, provided you meet the following design standards with colors, it.
Yeah.
It creates a class with content-based regulations. I, I don't think that passes the straight face test. I, I don't think that passes the straight face test. I mean, I can ask Bob DiCrescenzo if you want that specific question, Bruce.
I'm a little lost here. What's the question?
Do we want to continue with that, the color provision or, you know, uh, content provision that's in the existing regs? Can we for that? And it's, forgive me to use, it's, I, I believe it's a sign that doesn't receive approval from the zoning commission that the zoning officer signs off on, if I recall.
Well, anyway, I don't want to get tangled in the weeds here, but, uh,
Yeah.
I think that we have to give a lot of consideration to the notion of enforceable. There's no sense in making up more rules that we're not going to enforce. We already have issues with, you know, the burden on staffing and the effectiveness. And, you know, we've drive, you drive down Hot Metal Street on any given day and you're going to be surprised at how people have signs out and those, uh, you know, the back-to-back sign board things. And I mean, it's like, it's, this is a regulated thing. It's hard to imagine exactly what the regulations are. But I'm not complaining, but it's, I don't think it's consistent with our regulations.
What about the, um, sign plans on properties? I didn't hear anything about that.
So the, the non-residential zoning districts will still require a sign plan? So you have
We often hear is they, they don't have one.
Yeah, well, that's, actually, that's one of the problems, you know, what, what I, what we've experienced going through the files is that, yeah, your regs require sign plans, unified sign plans for multi-tenant businesses. But we've had several that, that come through that don't, don't have one. And I'll give you an example is, um, although it's the center, Simsbury Town Shops, they have a unified sign plan for only a portion of the property, not the property in its entirety.
I know. So there's We want Mark Greenberg to tell our flexibility here in the town of Simsbury, the zoning regulators, but we're accommodating stuff that we know is not, is prohibited in our regulations and we accommodate, accommodate it anyway. Because we're trying to encourage things that, you know, um, are not allowed, but we do it anyway. So I, my, my, my plea is let's not make it worse in the future. As we change our regulations and adopt new ones, I'm all for it. But let's not make, you know, add to the list of things we're not really able to get on top of with the owners of the properties because they don't want to spend the money. They have enough expenses and especially in this current age where their revenues are falling. Well, for many, I guess. Your Amazon and some of those others, you're doing quite well.
Amazon has no signs.
Well,
It's on their trucks.
Prime is on their trucks.
Okay. Okay, Mike, what do we, what should we do here? Should we just look at this stuff and, uh, think about it?
Yeah, I mean, we meet in two weeks. And I mean, this, the regulations were just in, uploaded your packet today. Um, why don't you digest it and, and let's talk about it in two weeks?
Thank you. So that part that doesn't show up today, can we get that or?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to address that because that, I, I have temporary sign regulations for the non-residential zoning districts. I don't know why that version, uh, is, is not on Dropbox, but I apologize.
Now, Mike, when we, when we look at the, um, design guidelines document that was on the design review board, um, are there things in that that, that are, um, going to be wiped out by the, uh, recognition of the court case, the, the court decisions?
Well, what the, for the design review board purposes, because they're guidelines and they're essentially advisory, um, they may pass the test. I can ask Bob D. this question because i- i- it's kind of gray. The zoning regulations, it's clear, you can't do the following. Design guidelines, however, we, we may still have some leverage. Just like I said earlier about the, the center code and, you know, for example, the freestanding signs in the center code have a very specific standard you have to follow, white background, dark text, no, you know, limited size. Um, let me, let me have that conversation with Bob D. because I don't want to, I don't want to give you bad advice on that question.
Okay, I mean, I've heard, I heard Kevin, who's not here tonight, and we're missing a whole, a whole lot of, um, opinion and knowledge about signs, um, in Kevin's case. Um, you know, no, no advertising, we don't allow advertising in our signs. Well, if the court case that I heard you say we can only regulate advertising signs, didn't I hear you say that?
Mm-hmm.
So that means we can't regulate any signs. And we don't allow advertising signs, but we can't regulate them. So where are we in that, in that world?
We're, we're stuck on size, height, location, that's it. We can't get into what, what it says anymore in the current, current, uh, court world.
Okay, is there, could we do things that were temporary or, or say just in the evening for, for, let's say from sunset to 11:00 PM? Could we allow signs that are temporary in that sense?
Provided we did that in a manner that was specific to the zoning district the property was located, yes. Um, you, you can, you can carve out a different standard for temporary signs and say that it just, it's, it's going to add another layer to it. The, the key to this is really, anything that we do for sign regs has to be tied to a zoning district or geographic area, cannot be tied to a user or user type.
But I'm thinking that along Hot Metal Street and West Street, we've got commercial properties. Um, and yet there are lots of different zones as we go along there. So that would make it difficult to, unless you said geographically, if we could use the, use Hot Metal Street as a, um, thing along Hot Metal Street, for example.
So maybe you could say that non-residential zoning districts along Hot Metal Street and/or West Street. And then you come up with a, with a standard for, for, excuse me, temporary signs. You could do something like that, like, like I said, that would tie it one, one to a zoning district, but two, more importantly, to a zoning district as a specific geographic location.
Okay. Anyway, just a thought. I'm, I'm thinking about things that would make it easier for businesses to be identified. We've got people who moved into town who are driving around at night looking for restaurants or ATMs or pharmacies or whatever. And it would be nice to make it easier for them to find them. That's just a thought.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm not suggesting signage wouldn't be, you know, an option, Dave, but some sort of a directory on the town website, a robust directory that's available 24/7 with, to anybody with a smartphone or a computer is probably a better
To our
Approach.
Yeah, I, that's what I was thinking while you all were talking, is that the, putting it on the town website makes a whole lot of sense. Um, because most people who are younger than I am, besides having smartphones, they have their new watches. So all they do is look at the watches to find out where they're going or what they're doing. I don't think the signage has, um, a, a, as much important as it may have had a few years ago.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I can concur as my daughter will never listen when I tell her where to go. She goes, I've got my phone. And I go, but just, let me just, no, I've got my phone. It's all they care about.
I hear that.
Today's point, always. But to Dave's point, I will say there are times, the only time she ever gets frustrated is when she gets to where she's supposed to be, but she still can't find it because it's behind or something like that.
True.
Signage would be helpful, I could see, yeah.
Anyway, so we have an opportunity. So let's look at, let's look at what Mike has uploaded and think about the implications and, uh, try to come back and have some concrete discussions. And we'll get Kevin involved and I'm sure that'll, uh, creates more, um, different outlook on things.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
Uh, no, you, you just have some correspondence in your packet. There was from, uh, Mr. Collins concerning affordable housing, affordable housing regulations.
Mr. Collins.
Yeah, it was, I, we received a letter today. It, it wasn't related, obviously, to a agenda item, but I just want to bring the, the commission's attention to it. Um, it's under the correspondence folder and it is from, I'm just waiting for the letter to load, uh, Rick Collins at Six North Drive in Simsbury.
There was a big post in Facebook on this. He posted this in Facebook in the Simsbury group. There was a lot of discussion on this, yeah.
So, Mike, do you post all the letters that come into the commission that, you know, on our Dropbox?
So
Yeah, see Dropbox. So I can't remember the last time somebody wrote a letter out of the blue and it got posted on Dropbox.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a while since we've had correspondence. So, yeah, when, and I'll, I'll try to, since, because it's been a while since we have correspondence, when we get it, I'll try to remember to remind, to tell the commission at the end of the meeting, you have correspondence, it may not be related to an agenda item, but you, you got a letter.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
And Mike, could I just ask you, I never got your, uh, packet from today. Um, if you could resend it, that would be great. I'm sitting here on the west coast. I'm actually in Seattle right now. So maybe it just didn't get to me yet, but I didn't get any of that.
You're three hours
Yeah.
It may be in transit, but I don't have it.
And, and I'll, I'll copy the link and send it to you right now to the Dropbox.
Okay.
So Mike
Mike, well.
I'm just interested because of this letter. I mean, I've had people, um, come up to me and express, um, interest in resolving affordable housing in this town as well. And I'm, I'm just not sure what, um, what kind of process we could get involved in to discuss or, or, uh, you know, I, I don't understand what I can tell them.
So, so I, I could tell you that the planning commission right now is working on developing an affordable housing plan for the town, which, once they get to draft, will be shared with this commission for input from this commission. Um, so it's been, right now, a planning commission issue, but it will be coming to your, your lap soon.
Is that something though, at any point in time, that anybody in the town would have the ability to comment on or to be involved in?
So the planning commission is planning to have a public, uh, workshop regarding the document in sometime in October. And that's been, they've been publicizing that a lot. But I think, you know, with, with the pub, with the press from Desegregate Connecticut, I think that you, as the zoning commission, may have people coming to your door knocking to say, well, this is a zoning issue. You have to solve it, zoning, zoning commission.
They've already been knocking, yes.
Yeah.
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 Right, but this, this state statute calls for the planning commission to develop a plan. And then once the plan is developed, then we have some role to facilitate implementation.
Right, but these people are just
The plan is the planning commission.
Yeah, but they're just interested in who they need to talk to and what kind of, um, quorum, you know, what, what kind of setting that they, uh, have available to them to have dialogue.
I can't describe the planning commission's process. Somebody asks me, I tell them they need to talk to Mr. Rice as the chairman or one of the members. Or go to a meeting.
The problem with some of this is that, um, zoning commissions have certain regulations and responsibilities by the statutes. And I think some of these people's ideas about how to fix things really have to do with changing how the statutes are worded. Um, they're really state issues. And, um, you know, we, if you look at what we're permitted to do, um, I, I don't know that, you know, we can constrain, we can make people, um, use what so many percentage, uh, of houses is affordable in the development. Um, but those things turn out to be controlled by the state statutes in terms of the, uh, percentage of income and all of that sort of thing. And if you don't adhere to certain parts of it, you get no credit for it. Um, and so it's, it's really very, we're very constrained. Um, if you look at what the people who are, uh, saying zoning should be changed to fix these things, uh, what they think can be done, uh, we're not anywhere near able to do the kind of thing they're aiming at. You know, one of them is, uh, I, I've heard a lot, they want us to build a lot more, uh, apartments, multifamily apartments and make them affordable. And, you know, we, we can do sort of a little of that. But if any of you have listened to residents over the last five years, I think 85% or 90% of the people have said, why are we building so many damn apartments? Uh, it has not been the other way around. So, you know, they're, they're getting, uh, they're against the, uh, argument that we need to build more apartments. So anyway, that's my thought. But I didn't tell you what we can say, but tell them to look at the state statutes to start with. So what zoning commissions are permitted to do.
Right.
Okay, anymore?
Well, I would, I, I'm not, I don't want to belabor this, but, um, in 2005, there was an emerging controversy bubbling in Simsbury. And all I can suggest to somebody to do what I did, I came to the zoning meetings for two years. I only missed three meetings in two years, just as a private citizen. And, uh, then was elected to the zoning commission in 2007 after having attended regularly for two years. So I'd say to anybody who's interested in an issue, whether it be affordable housing, but something big, come to the meeting, sit through a few that have nothing to do with your issue to see how this process works. And whether it's planning or zoning, any of them.
Go to the planning commission because they are doing a
Right. Exactly, go to the planning meetings. There's no substitute for initiative. Put in some time.
Good answer. You have a motion to adjourn?
Dave, before we adjourn, let me just ask, is, I don't know if we, if you want to pass over the issue of the, uh, procedure, rules of procedure? That was on the agenda.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I read it and really the only thing, I mean, I could see, as you pointed out, uh, you know, at our last meeting, that one obvious change is to retitle the secretary to vice chairman. And the vice chairman is designated by the procedure as the substitute when the chairman can't be at a meeting. And then there's a provision that the chairman will name somebody to, to chair the meeting temporarily if the vice chairman's not available. Oh, that's fine with me. I mean, I didn't see anything that really caught my eye, except the change in the language relative to the reliance on Robert's Rules of Order. That, um, the current rules of procedure provide, maybe overstate the reliance to be limited to guidance. Robert's Rules of Order is to be served as guidance for the commission, not as, um, the, um, you know, in a non-binding procedural guide. And then it seems like, uh, you've changed that. And I, I think significantly, and I just wondered what the reasoning was.
Where, where is that, Bruce?
It's, uh, it's in the middle of page four. I mean, you're, you're reducing the flexibility to let the chairman of the commission, um, apply judgment, for instance. And it, it's going to, you know, if the way it's stated were to become our regular practice, it's going to place a premium on knowledge of Robert's rules that hasn't been, uh, you know, a factor in the past.
I don't know, anybody else have any comments? I just thought Robert's Rules is pretty much accepted as, uh, the way to conduct meetings. And I, I didn't see any reason to waffle on it, but
I think that if you ask, uh, Bob DiCrescenzo, he's going to give you some wording to waffle on it. It, it's not suggested. on it. It's not suggested unless it's required by statute that you limit yourself to compliance with Robert's rules.
And it, it might lead to, uh, uh, some sort of a lawsuit that we didn't really want. Uh, Mike, could you ask DiCrescenzo, Bob, when you're about that particular thing? And, uh, you know, generally we adhere to Robert's rules, but I.
Generally.
Generally.
Yeah.
Maybe he could. Okay. Well, that's why we wanted to talk about it.
Yeah.
Any other comments from anybody? Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. We've had enough fun for tonight.
And we didn't have Kevin. Gosh.
Yeah.
Anyway, you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'm still awake. Good meeting.
Who, who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Donna. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. Five, nothing. Thank you all.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.